You guys ready? Okay, thank you. Before I started, okay, I want to say happy birthday to a very important person, my wife Helen Wu, she's here. Again, okay, I want to take a couple of seconds, okay? The reason I can sit over here against my wife, okay? I basically doing nothing, okay? So anyway, okay, good evening, welcome to West Covina City Council Meeting. Today is January 21st, right now 7 o'clock and the meeting in session. And let me see, today invocation will be led by Pastor Dan Johnson of Christ Church of the Valley, followed by the Pledge of Allegion led by Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado. All rise please. Have a seat please. Assistant City Club, roll call please.
Good evening. Councilman Castellanos.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado.
Present.
Mayor Wu.
Here.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything to report out from the close section?
Nothing to report out, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. So we are going to move on to next is presentation. Tonight, we have a three presentation. So the first presentation is I love the most. Some people give out the money for our children, okay? I think people know West Covina has the most very successful shop local after-school program. And for these three years, I think we collect almost about $100,000 to three school district. Royal School just joined us, so you're going, we're going to catch up to support you. Don't worry, she gave me a face, say, "I don't have that much of money." Not yet, not yet, okay? See, you joined much later last year, a year ago, so hopefully, we're going to have all a support to you guys. But quickly about what is shop local after-school program. Basically, all this funding, we want to support our after-school, meaning after 3:00 till 6:00 o'clock for junior high, high school student, okay? We don't want them to roaming on the street. We want to provide the program for the school district for dancing, singing, performing art. Basically, it's for so children most needed, the bottom fish, they, they maybe not academic savvy, maybe they are not athletic, but they, they have nothing to have, to offer. We want, okay, the community want to kind of like a village, raise your kid together. We want to have so children have something, okay? For something, they have the program to stay in the school. Because outside the school is very scary. We do not want them to roaming on the street, in the park, in the shopping mall, on the street, pick up the wrong habit. And we will, especially right now, we have all this drug issue. So hopefully, we have some interesting program, okay, to provide in the school, from the school district, for this junior high and high school student have a dancing, singing, performing art, and what? And trade school. We want them to learn maybe how to fix the car, and we arrange, okay, Ontario Airport. I think our San Gabriel partnership could talk about that. We're going to partner with Ontario Airport. So for our, our high school student can internship to learn how to operate the airport. And not only that, okay, the Chino Airport, they want to do a training about mechanic, learn how to fix the engine. So a lot of good, okay, program want to use from this shop local after-school funding. So I want to have today, I'm very pleased that we have our local community, CAWC, Chinese American Association of West Covina, they want to donate to three school district to help continue. And they told us, right? This funding is just started, meaning, yeah. Meaning, today, they are going to give each school $3,000, okay? But later on, going to continue, right, James? Oh, she, he said yes. The board members say yes, right? They're going to continue inject more money from the board member, the West Covina resident to help our children to have a program continuously. So James, you want to come out, since you're the president, okay? And you want to say something? We want to thank you, the city want to thank you to support our children. Okay, thank you, you want to say something?
Good evening and Happy New Year. And Honorable Mayor Tony Wu and Honorable Mayor Protem and all the city councils, good evening. And today, I come with all our board members and from Chinese American Association of West Covina, come here to do this contribution. And because we know the children is our future, and you know, the education is very important, definitely. So we wish this, we on behalf of our Chinese American Association of West Covina, to do this contribution, we, we, we think this, as Mr. Tony Wu said, this is just a start. We hope we can have more and more friends to do more contribution, to help our kids, to help the education, to support our, you know, after-school program. And yeah, that's, so that's, that's why we, all our supporters here, and here we were support, this, this time, we're donating for the three school, yeah, three schools, three, and 3,000 for each. And we wish through this kind of contribution can make our city better city, and for everyone is better life. And thank you, and may God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, and I want to quickly, okay, say this, this is one of started to sponsorship, and we are going to have, we have about 5,000 business shop local, meaning, we're going to have all the business, the small mall and pop business, to maybe sponsor $500 a year to our after-school program. And we have 5,000, equally 2.5 to 3 million dollars to inject to school system, to help all the kid with all this, okay, investment. It's a very small investment, but I think it's going to be a big future for all those kids, because I think this is important. So, so again, and we want to encourage to business shop, okay, we, our resident parent to shop local, the local business, so all those business can survive, so they can continue inject all this funding for our school and our children. So the first school is a Royal Unified School. Would you please, okay, I know, I know the superintendent show up, Julie Mitchell, okay, she's outstanding, okay, educator, so maybe you can say something, and say something about your school after-school program, and with their board member, see, they come out all prepared, they want more money. Thank you so much, and say something, okay?
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. And thank you very much as well. So in the Royal Unified School District, the shop local dollars have gone to support our music program, and so we have Music for All, so all of our students in grades 1 through 6 have music education, but the shop local dollars have gone to support additional after-school music programs. So we have a mariachi that meets at Gianno Intermediate School, and then we also have orchestra and band. So it's open, it's free of charge to all of our students, and the shop local dollars help to support that, so that all of our students have that opportunity for music, both during the school day, but also after the day. It's also my pleasure to introduce, we have our board president, David Malkin, we have our board clerk, Lynn Ebenkap, and we have our board member, Donna Friedman. David, would you like to say a few words?
First, I want to thank Mayor Wu for inviting us here today and for reactivating this program. I understand that you've had a big interest in this and had activated it to a new level this year, so thank you for that. Also, the West Covina Chinese Association, big red envelope for us for the New Year. I tell you, it's a great way to start the New Year, and it's the Year of the Rat, and we will celebrate that, and make that very generous donation go towards our students. Thank you very much.
And I know that we are receiving a check, but we also wanted to show our appreciation and gratitude with a certificate, so not quite the same value as your check, but it's coming from the heart, from us and from our students, so thank you very much. Can I pass, can I pass that to you?
And don't, okay, don't, don't forget to give them the real check, okay? Okay, let's check the fake, okay? Okay, so this, so this is a real check. Okay, okay, go. Okay. Thank you, Julie, thank you so much for joining us, appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. Now, the next, we want to welcome Covina Unified School. Okay, come up. I, I know you guys have a board meeting tonight, right? So, so, okay, and you are the director for this program, so you want to kind of share with us about your program, so we can continue to give you the money, otherwise, we will cut it off, okay?
Thank you very much. My name is Jonathan Blackmore, I'm the director of State and Federal, or Director of 21st Century Learning and Special Projects for Covina Valley Unified School District. I'm thrilled and honored to be here tonight to receive this on behalf of our Board of Education and on behalf of our superintendent, Dr. Sheehan. Unfortunately, they had a board meeting, Board of Education meeting this evening, and they were not able to attend. In Covina Valley Unified School District, the shop local after-school program goes to support STEM activities after school, career technical education pathways, and extra and co-curricular programs that enrich the lives of our students. Like Mayor Wu said, the, we know the importance of after-school programs and what it does in the lives of our children. Gives them extended opportunities to really enrich their school days. Again, when we talk to our parents and we talk to our community, they always stress the importance of our students being involved on our campuses after school. So again, I'd like to thank the Chinese American Association of West Covina for this. This is an amazing contribution to our schools, and this money will, will do excellent work in Covina Valley Unified. So thank you again, again, I'm very proud to be here. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, thank you very much. This is the real check, okay, good, all right, thank you.
Okay, and, okay, next will be the West Covina Unified, West Covina Unified basically have almost, okay, okay, brother love, please show up, okay? And I think it's important, West Covina Unified almost have entire population, okay, of the school, and we have how many high school, two high school, right?
Four high schools now.
Oh, yeah, 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 including the, yeah, so, yeah, so you can talk about that, okay, talk about after-school program, okay? West Covina Unified is doing very, very good right now, so, okay, we're very proud of them. I think they are raised up like a rocket to the sky with improvement of school, okay? We will continue, I think, again, again, this should be community, meaning the school and our community to help each other, so make sure our children will have a very good future, okay? Want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Wu. So my name is Mark Travatore, and I am the Director of Secondary Curriculum and Instruction for West Covina Unified School District, and I have Mr. Flowers, who's also one of our board members. And on behalf of our superintendent and a Board of Education, we are deeply indebted to you for this. Just kind of a brief description of what we're doing with the shop local funds. One of our middle schools, Holland Crest, has a color guard that they've been running successfully for the last few years, and that meets a couple of days a week after school. And then at West Covina High School, we have a coral club. And what I want to touch on is the fact that while you're giving us these funds that help to facilitate these programs, and giving to us, you know, it takes a village, that whole concept, these programs also give back to the community as well. So many of you have seen the West Covina Choir perform at different events and functions throughout the city, and, exactly, and with the color guard as well. And they also go to the elementary schools within the district and the, and other middle schools to kind of foster that appreciation and try to get kids interested in it. And nothing against STEM and what the thrust is of Covina Valley, but we need more programs like this in the way of the arts, especially the performing arts. So we really see this as something that helps kind of foster and grow that interest. So again, on behalf of our Board of Education, our superintendent, we're deeply grateful, and thank you for this money, and I promise it's going to go to both of those clubs, and you're going to see it in action when you see those kiddos perform. Thank you.
Mike, say something.
Again, also, as Dr. Travatore said, I'd like to thank the West Covina Chinese Association for donating this to our district. I can remember when Tony first came to me, he approached me, said, "Mike, I'd like to bring this to the district." So, yes, indeed, he said, "It's going to bring millions of dollars, it's coming." He said, "It's coming." So he, the Bible says, "A man without a vision shall perish." So this man has a vision behind him, I see what he's doing in our, in our city. So he came to me, brought to the superintendent, and I look at it now, it's growing beyond our own imagination. I'd like to say thank you again, and, you know, I love to see that a check in my hand, Angela. Yes, and again, thank you so much, we truly appreciate it. Ms. Wu, happy birthday.
And I want to thank Mike, okay, because when I was starting this agenda, okay, this program, and I need somebody to kind of help us, okay, and Mike, right away, jumped in, said, "Let me help you." He set up the meeting with the superintendent, okay, and we have a big meeting, and I persuade them, I said, "This is going to, okay, to help our children." And he, they were beginning, you kind of, kind of like, ah, politician, they're a bunch of liar, okay, so, so, but the truth is this, now they find out, okay, it's not really, really passionate to help our children. So for the three years, as you can see, we're consistent. And last year, due to the city, we do the reform, so all, all intention tried to settle, make sure we have a city new, under the new management. But now, this year, we, we ready, so we're going to make sure we have a lot of funding for the school, okay? We want to make sure our business, we're pitching, at the same time, we will shop local and to help out, okay, the business to survive in our city. But this is so, so important to work together, school district and the city government is all together, we are together, it's one unit. So together, we stand, and we can make a difference. So thank you so much, and can you provide the, the check and the real check too, okay? Thank you so much. Thank you, CAWC. Okay, okay. Thank you so much for school district, okay? Really appreciate you come over here, and I guarantee, we're going to have more coming in. Make sure our children have program, okay? We want to dancing, singing, performing, let it stay in the school, okay? Same thing, same thing to you too, make sure dancing, singing, performing art for junior and high school, we want it to stay in the school, okay? Thank you, appreciate, thank you so much, okay? Thank you, again, okay, thank you. Okay, yeah, you can, okay, nice presentation, I want to have a, West Covina Kiwanis group, Kiwanis. And Kiwanis is one of another big entity in, very successful in West Covina, they're doing a lot of great job, not only they do the 5K run and the white 1K for the kid, but also you got doing such an excellent job for the Christmas Children Parade, that is outstanding, okay, in last December. And the first year is kind of mediocre, but last year become, is spectacular. So I, I think it's effort from Kiwanis, and I think today, Mark, 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 Mark joining, yeah, Mark joining, Assistant City Manager, join your group too, to see what kind of help you guys need, we can work together. But anyway, this is what about the community and the different group work together to help our city and our children. So you want to say something?
Yeah, so the, the pumpkin run, it's a seventh, it was a 70th annual pumpkin run that we, we've been hosting, we've been hosting it for two years. Two years ago, when we took it over, we had about 500 runners. This year, we grew by about 45%, and we had 750 runners that were part of the run. The most important part of that is that over 350 were students coming out of West Covina. We had eight schools participate, they, we did a fundraising campaign where we had the, had the students run for free. So it was really amazing, we raised close to 23,000, and then after expenses, we're going to be donating 5,900 to the senior center. Yeah, so, and that's just one project out of many that we do, and like you were talking about, Tony, we're constantly looking for opportunities to give back to the community, filling gaps with, when there's no services, and then also providing, you know, opportunities for the kids to serve. Because that's, at the end of the day, what Kiwanis is about, providing service leadership for the kids. We provide, the funding that we also raise goes to seed funding for special projects for the kids to actually run through Key Club and through Builders Club. So we're really excited that we can give back, give back to the senior center. I'd love to have Susie come down also to talk about how the, the funds are being used within the senior center. But thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. First and foremost, you know, the greatest appreciation and gratitude to the West Covina Kiwanis, and Andres, and Happy, and the rest of the members, and the endless amount of work that they put in throughout the year, and, you know, from their high school volunteers to every member in the program, I mean, with the Christmas parade, the pumpkin run, the Easter egg hunt, I mean, the service hours that they put in is amazing. At the senior center, the proceeds benefit our senior program, so we average anywhere from 400 to 500 seniors on a daily basis. Some come in for our congregate meal program, others come in for special events, classes, trips. We also have social services such as notary, legal assurance, we have a billiards room, so the services are endless. So with these funds, we're able to provide free programs and services to the seniors. So we tend to celebrate almost every special event from MLK having a special meal to Christmas, and so we always try to bring in some form of entertainment and to keep it free, and just at the suggested $2 donation for their lunch, we use these proceeds to pay for entertainment such as a DJ, live entertainment, decorations, centerpieces, you name it, we stretch out this $5,943 to last us throughout the year, and so the partnership is awesome, and, you know, we look forward to the pumpkin run every year because we know that it's going to benefit, you know, our senior community and also the Kiwanis Children's Program. So thank you so much.
Good job, you want to say something?
Actually, for our service leadership program that, oh, my name is Mary Happy Price, I'm the current president for the West Covina Kiwanis Club. And for one of the program that Andres have mentioned earlier is SLP, is a service leadership program. Actually, two of the West Covina High School, Edgewood and West Covina High School, they both have Key Clubs. And we provide a lot of service throughout our community divisionally and also like throughout other, to other city as well. So it's not just locally, but we do contribute, and we work hand on hand alongside with our youth to guide them to the right way and sort of help them be a better leader for tomorrow and to have a better future, yeah.
See, that's what I'm talking about, okay? We have Kiwanis Club, we have shop local after-school program, it's all from the community, and then, and you got doing the magnificent, okay, awesome job for our community, because I attend your pumpkin run, I attend your, okay, Christmas Children Parade, and that is outstanding, and, and again, all the, $6,000 to our, okay, senior center for all this program, this is such as needed. But so I want to represent our city to really thank you guys for your dedication, okay, really help our city. Again, this is how that, how we about united, we together, we help our community, help our people. But thank you so much, you want to accept, represent the city, accept this check?
Sure.
Okay.
So I know some of you weren't able to attend the pumpkin run, but, so we brought shirts for each and every one of our council members, and, and the, and the check, there you go. And we give one for, for David, and then we'll hand them out to you guys as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, okay, really appreciate, thank you, okay? Okay, thank you, thank you. And the next presentation, we have San Gabriel Valley Economy Development Partnership, would you please come up to do a presentation? Okay, and, so Bill, yes, thank you so much, nice to see you again. And quickly, before you do the presentation, I, I want to say this, okay, and I think three, four years ago, when I get invited for installation, your predecessor, okay, and I forgot his name.
Jeff.
Jeff, yes, okay, and they go to a restaurant, I get invited by anyone, and we went to the restaurant, okay, to, to attend the, the previous predecessor there, okay, installation, and they invite us, they say, "Hey, this, this investor is good, is, you know who they are?" That's how we, the first time we met, with Chris Freeman, previous city manager, that is Simpoli, okay? You guys introduced Simpoli to city, and they came to the city, we gave the, the presentation about all the different development side, and they decide to pick the BKK. So that is all stuff from you guys, I want to thank you, okay, let potentially $500 million to our city and the payoff of our bond, that's why we owe, okay, about $30 million. So thank you so much, that's why you're here, we want to appreciate, continue to work partnership with you. So right on is your show.
Thank you, Mayor Wu, and Mayor, Council members, thank you for having us. City manager, thank you, staff. And so I'm, I, my name is Bill Manis, first of all. I serve as the president and CEO of the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership. I've been with the partnership a year. Prior to that, I was in city government 33 years, I'm a former city manager. And our group basically represents all 31 cities in the San Gabriel Valley. And so if, if on my slides there, if we can go to the map, that would, just, just to give you a regional perspective of our area, so, so that's our region. It consists of about 200 square miles with a population of close to 1.6 million people, and we have approximately 76,000 companies in this map area here. So our, our membership is made up of cities, special districts, we have banks on our board, we have colleges, we have hospitals, we have developers, and, and on and on. And so our, our group really bridges people into cities to help, to help find various opportunities. And so as, as the mayor mentioned briefly, we, we have a large developer on our board, and we, we had them meet, the, the mayor back in the day, and that led to a potential development deal. And so, so, so that's kind of the stuff we do, but we initially, when we first started about 30 years ago, we, we were really set up to help market and brand all of the valley. Because if you ask somebody about Pasadena, they could talk about the Rose Bowl and the Rose Parade, but if you ask somebody about Duarte perhaps, or maybe City of Azusa, they, they might not know much about it. So, so our group started off with that, and then it really morphed shortly after that into a workforce development component, a public policy component, and then a very heavy marketing and event component. And so these, these are the areas that, that we focus on, I briefly mentioned that, and then I'll, I'll bring up Paul in a second on my team to talk about our events and some of the things that we offer as far as tools at, at the partnership offices. And then Paul Thomas will be followed by Brad Jensen. Brad Jensen is our public, public policy director. So Brad looks at all the bills coming out of the state level, federal level, and Brad So Brad looks at all the bills coming out of the state level, federal level, and Brad has a special committee made up of board members and, and actually members that, that look at these bills and to see if we're going to actually support them or not. And so we, we also offer business walks to where we will go out, visit a, a company, find out if there are any issues that they're having. And we actually do this in partnership with the city. And, and so it's important to hear from, from your existing companies, as much as people try to get companies to, to actually locate in their city, it's just as important to make sure the companies you have here are happy being here and to make sure that they're not having any issues. And so our, our group works closely with our cities to, to help ensure that. And then, and then we have workforce training showcases that we do. And the, the mayor briefly mentioned a airport project and we're, we're actually looking in the spring to work with Ontario Airport to have an airport academy. And it will be training or basically exposing children in various school districts to all the job opportunities at the airport. So there's, there's everything from, from, from being a pilot obviously to TSA, to admin related things. They have a budget department, they have finance, they have an HR department. So there, there's, there's a lot of career opportunity at the airport. So our, our plan is to work closely with them and to have this first time academy that we'll be doing with them in the next couple of months. And so with that, I'm going to hand the mic over to Paul Thomas. Paul oversees all of our marketing, he does all our social media and Paul's going to walk you through some of our events and our power site. So thank you for having us and most importantly, thank you very much for, for being an ongoing member of the partnership. We greatly appreciate it.
All right, thanks very much. So I'm very impressed that you guys are out here supporting your city this time of night. It's, it's pretty impressive and wonderful. I'm really quickly going to go through a couple of things that we offer West Covina through the partnership. Primarily, we're going to talk about the power site very quickly, which is really for, for the city council and for our folks here. Lisa, thank you for walking us through this, I appreciate it. So we have a tool available to the city of West Covina. Basically, it shows you demographics, it shows you business information, it shows you infrastructure for the various sites. So if somebody was looking to invest in West Covina, you can simply go to our power site and look up an area and find out what is there, what will support that area. So you see here, for example, there's a listing of various properties that are available. A lot of this stuff I think I pulled from City of Industry, so apologies there, it's not West Covina. But it'll tell you what size are the facilities that are available, what kind of resources are there, what size are the, the gates, if you have a, say a loading dock, what sizes it's set up for. Go to the next one real quick. It also talks about the infrastructure. So if you're interested in knowing like what's the, the power grid for the area, there's all of this stuff is right there, it's embedded, it's available to you. And I, I wish people called me every single day and asked me more questions about this because there's so much data that's available and I would love it if you guys were in touch at any time to find out what kind of resources are there for the city through this. Next one. It also talks about demographics. You could find out about the educational level of the people in your area, the ethnicity of the people in your area, the racial makeup of people in your area, the wages earned by people in your area. It goes down very granular, the closer in you get, the more specific it gets. I looked at my own church, actually, I was very curious to see what are the people around my church like. I was, I was pretty amazed to find out the, the makeup of the area. It's very, very interesting stuff, so. As Bill mentioned, I'm also in charge of the events for the, for the partnership. I'm sorry. So very quickly, just to let you know, we do large, large scale events every year. We do developer summits, we do a legislative networking get together, we have an economic forecast summit that's coming up on the 4th of March, which will be really great. We're going to talk to somebody from Deloitte about artificial intelligence and how that can improve business. We also do smaller events. Oh, sorry, this is a larger one, this is our gala. We do a big gala every year, we're not sure where this year is going to be, we're settling on the location. Last year was the Rose Bowl, it was fantastic. We had a local drum, drum line from Pasadena performing and it was, it was really good, we had a great time. We also, and this may hopefully be interesting to the city council, we go to the, the largest retail convention in the country every year, ICSC. And we basically, we have a space with lots of meeting space, we try to get businesses to come in and talk to our council members, we would love to see you there. I'll be there, will you be there? All right, well, that's done, all right, that was easy. All right. And we also do smaller events throughout the year like power lunches and other things. Basically getting business people together, local businesses to talk about contemporary issues that we're all interested in. So that is a very quick overview of what we do during the course of a year. With no further ado, I'll hand it over to Brad Jensen. I'll see you in Vegas.
I laugh at my colleague, he has to convince people to come to Vegas, cracks me up. I'm Brad Jensen, I'm Director of Public Policy for the Economic Partnership and I've been with the organization for many years and I oversee our political advocacy program. So advocacy is a very critical part of what we do. We try to advocate for pro-business policies, to work on improved regulation, to make it so that we have, we are economically competitive with other parts of California and also with other parts of the country. And that's no small challenge here in the Golden State. So the way that we really do this is we do, we engage with political advocacy on a number of different levels. Our primary focus is on state legislation where we feel that we have the most influence. And so we work very closely with our local lawmakers here in the San Gabriel Valley. We partner with other business organizations throughout the state. We, in fact, Bill is going to be headed up to Sacramento tomorrow to meet with a number of lawmakers and also other major business groups. We get together periodically to work on these things. We travel to Washington DC and Sacramento and then we also have a monthly committee meeting where we review a number of different and important political items. Tomorrow will actually be our meeting, some of the things that are on our committee agenda tomorrow is the new SCAG 2020 RTP SES, which is very important for housing and also planning. We'll also be looking at SB 50, which is a, a land use and housing densification bill that's been very, of great concern to cities throughout the region. And as well as the sales tax measure for the LA County Fire Department. So these are some of the key things that we've been doing. Take a look here, this is back for a few years, we engage heavily in political advocacy. Now, very few political, many groups will look at state legislation, we look at a lot. And so we process a, a number of different bills every year in a variety of different policy areas. And so we can see that in the next slide here. So this is the breakdown for the 2019 session and it'll be very similar heading into this year. You can see that the bulk of our activity is focused on regulation, then also housing has been a huge concern. There's a vast number of new bills dealing with housing as well as other key things like taxation, labor issues. Privacy was a major concern last year because there's the new California Consumer Privacy Act, which will have a number of ramifications for business groups and also local governments about how to handle people's private information and their data to make sure that it's not hacked or leaked. Very, very thorny and complicated issue. Our next slide here. And so we, we've had a fair amount of success. We had 21 bills that we supported were signed into law while 14 of those that we were opposed were fortunately signed in. The governor actually was very surprising last year, he vetoed nine bills, which I thought was more than I anticipated. But it's a very interesting kind of track record, obviously this being the start of a two-year session, there are a number of bills that'll be held over and carried into this year, like SB 50 or a number of other things as well. We also have a lot of advocacy, so we go up to Sacramento periodically. Here we are meeting with Assembly Member Blanca Rubio that represents West Covina and these are members of our Board of Directors. You can see there Rena Del Haro from Kaiser Permanente, Lupe Valdez from Union Pacific, Peter Hidalgo from Charter Communications and David Reyno from Foothill Transit, just down the street. We also have a very major networking event every year that we host with the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. We have traditionally held this at Miller Coors and this year we'll be holding that at a boutique hotel in Pasadena called The Constance. And it's a tremendous event. We, this past year, we had three members of Congress, two members of the Board of Supervisors, several state legislators that are able to come. It's a great opportunity for local elected officials to gather, meet with people in a, in a relaxed setting and it's a tremendous event that we think is very effective. Next slide. We also have a lot of, of great political events throughout the year. We'll be holding periodic breakfasts with our lawmakers and these are free for, and very small gatherings for our members to attend, so usually about 20 or 25 people. We'll also have a larger luncheon with Senator Portantino, who's Chair of the Senate Appropriations Committee. And then we'll have breakfast, I think, coming up here with Assemblymen Freddie Rodriguez and Pomona and then with Assemblyman Chris Holden from Pasadena, a number of other people throughout the year as we go along. And so before I leave here, I just want to provide these and hand these out. You are actually the very first recipients, every year we publish a guide to, of key kind of legislative priorities here in the region, very focused on the San Gabriel Valley and it features members of the partnership. And so these are actually fresh off the, off the, off the press, you're the very first members to receive them. So go home and tell your children about that. This is a very special occasion, thank you very much. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer those. Dave, thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation and I, I know such important for partnership with, with you guys, so you can bring a lot of business to us. As council have any question? Okay, so, or no question, so thank you so much, we really appreciate to spend time and come to do the presentation. Thank you so much, appreciate it, okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, bring some business to our city, okay? We wait for you. So anyway, and we move on to next agenda, okay, basically, so will be overall communication. So we're going to move on to, bye, okay, overall communication. If you, anybody want to address to council, please fill the yellow card, okay, and then provide to our Assistant City Clerk, okay, so you can address to council, okay? And you don't want to address council, but you want our Assistant City Clerk to read for you, please fill the orange one, okay? And how many speaker we have? Six, okay, let's start the first one, thank you.
Vicky Shaliga, followed by Herb Redholtz, followed by George Giovani-Win.
Regarding, I think George want to talk about July 4th, but it's on our agenda. Should we let them speak right now or should we let them during the July 4th, so you can, which one you prefer?
She's not feeling too good, Mr. Mayor.
Huh?
She's not feeling too good.
Oh, okay, so I know, I want you to talk, but I'm talking about George. You want to do it now, you want to do it when we decide to July 4th? Because you, you want to speak in that time or you want to speak right now after, after her? Okay, okay, fine, okay.
for their specific disability. These funds also go directly towards helping over 35 community organizations. Your generosity for helping with permit fees and cosponsoring of our annual night on the town is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vicky. I hope, I hope you feel better. And I, I want to say this, okay, I want to thank you for your passion, okay, and for so many years doing this and of course, city will support you.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members, Staff and all the residents. I'm up here tonight on item number 10. It's the, I think it's my third trip to the mic on this. This is SB 50 again, which my understanding is it has once again been pulled from the floor and gone back to committee because as I said last time, nobody likes it, they just can't get it right. However, they are shoving it right along. This is probably going to be the, I don't know, 10th or 12th iteration of this particular, this particular bill. And I am obviously in 100% support of this council taking a position in opposition to this bill. No matter what happens to it, we just, we have to be vigilant, we have to keep our eyes and ears on what Sacramento is doing because it apparently is quite clear that they don't have our best interests at heart, they have their best interests at heart. And I was very impressed, by the way, with the presentation we just heard from the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership. That was, that, that was good to hear and good to see and I'm glad we're a part of that and I think we need to really continue to have that strong relationship with them and build it up. I was also glad to hear that they too are in opposition to SB 50, just like the League of California Cities is in opposition. So it, I was reading about, again about SB 50, that they are claiming that they were working with a local legislative bodies such as city councils over the last several months on this and I don't know that they've worked with us or not, but I doubt it. I think they're probably saying that. But again, I appreciate this being on the agenda, stay vigilant, opposition to this and we have to keep, you know, this city has a history of wanting to keep and maintain local control, whether it's police, fire, whatever. Because once you give up a little bit, you end up giving all of it up and you're not going to get it back. So this is another issue of local control, we want to be able to maintain the character and dignity of our neighborhoods the way we want them, not the way they're forced upon us by the state. So let's keep up that fight and I appreciate this being on there in opposition to 50. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb, okay, next please.
Giovani, followed by John Schumaker, followed by Win-Win Zhang.
George, I, I know you want to talk about July 4th, about the parade, right?
Uh huh.
Okay, it's already on our agenda, we're going to discuss, do you want to, after your speech, you want to state? Okay, so if we have any question, can we ask you?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, hi, my name is George, I'm the creator of West Covina Buzz and first I would like to thank the city and the city council for inviting me here today. Me and my committee really appreciate the opportunity to express our input. I decided to put together the 4th of July Committee Parade because of two things, the love for the, this community and the nostalgia of the years past. In 2009, my spouse and I moved to the city of Costa Mesa in Orange County and we were welcomed by our neighbors with wine and apple pie. We instantly fell in love, we instantly fell in love with the neighborhood and we felt at home. So we asked all of our neighbors, why were, why was everybody in the city so nice and neighborly? Everybody couldn't stop talking about the 4th of July Parade. When we first experienced this event, it was unreal. Everyone was having a good time, there were jumpers, water slides for the kids, potluck, food tables, live bands playing music and the list goes on and on. This was all ran by the community. Since we moved back to West Covina, we felt a sense of disconnect as a whole. And we want to build a strong sense of community and support for one another like we felt in Costa Mesa. When we first presented this project to my committee, they all remembered how wonderful they felt and proud to be a West Covina resident during the past few 4th of Julys. And those parades ended at Cameron Park where there were plenty of shade on a, on a hot day, soft grass, picnicking, games for the kids and ample food trucks for, and parking. This is why this year would be perfect for the 4th of July to end at Cortez Park versus Old Glendora that ends in the parking lot behind the parking structure near the freeway. We proposed a sensible route to begin at South Hills High, then down, west down Cameron, runs, turns right on, on Citrus to go north on Citrus and end at Cortez Park. Why this route and Cortez Park would be the better choice? The first reason, the weather in July is really hot, as opposed to the sun beaten blacktop to end the other route to meet your tired feet, we suggest ending route at Cortez Park. There our residents and guests can enjoy a, a cool picnic shaded, soft grassy lawn for our children to play at the playground, jump our children to play at the playground, jumpers and water slides. The second reason is quintessential feature of the Fourth of July event is the All-American Classic Car Show. As opposed to holding it in a four-story parking structure or not having it at all, we have, we have the better choice of Cortez Park. There is plenty of room to accommodate at least 50 classic cars glistening in the open sun. The car show can accommodate, can raise a significant amount of money for future events for our city. A parade that runs through a business district can benefit those businesses on a route through Old Glendora Boulevard. But this parade is not about that or for that. It is for our community, and therefore, it is routed through residential streets which builds lasting pride and stronger bonds amongst neighbors. Plus, at Cortez Park, there's enough space for a good old country-style fair with plenty of booths, businesses within our city, and neighboring cities to sponsor. This keeps the money here in our city and our neighborhoods. In accordance to the tradition, Fourth of July events should usually start in the fresh morning sun and ends at 4:00 or 5:00 p.m., so residents can rest and prepare for evening activities such as Fourth of July shows. By restricting the Fourth of July events to the evening, our residents would have missed the magic of traditional long-held by all. Our residents have spoken, and I created a voting poll on two different neighborhood watch pages. First would be West Covina Buzz. 16% of voted for Old Glendora, Walnut Creek Parkway, go down Lark Ellen to end at Cameron Park. 13% voted for Old Glendora to end at behind parking structure near the freeway, and a whopping 71% voted to start at South Hills High School and end at Cortez Park. The second neighborhood watch page is next door, and 17% voted for Old Glendora, 11% voted for Old Glendora to end at parking structure behind the freeway, and another whopping 72% voted for South Hills to end at Cortez Park. So you can see, the residents voted overwhelmingly in favor for the suggested route to end at Cortez Park. Our community is interested for the best of our community and what we would benefit for our beautiful city. And on behalf of my committee, I urge the council to strongly consider our proposed route for the Fourth of July parade, which is illogical and most beneficial for our residents and all participants. Thank you so much.
Thank you, George. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, please.
John Schumaker, followed by Win-Wen Zhang, followed by Colleen Rizzotti.
I'm here to support our community members doing the parade. And I was sitting there thinking about it, how he mentioned when he lived in Costa Mesa, how the residents put together this thing. And you start to think about it, and, you know, the Rose Parade isn't run by the city of Pasadena. Rose Bowl isn't run by the city of Pasadena. You look at a lot of the major events. I grew up in Huntington Park. That parade was put together by community members. They're successful. What the cities do is what the cities do best, and in many cases, that's staying out of the way, you know, or supplying the services that are needed, that no, you know, civic organization can handle. The advantage of community members being involved, I love using the JC example of the parade. You started off, if you're 21 years old, starting off with the organization, you'd start off on a small event, and the goal was by the time you reached 30, 35 years old, you've been there, you're running the Christmas parade. You worked your way up through the organization, and you did those things. The benefit was that the city got a lot of the credit, but they were also supplying what was needed, the police and fire, and sometimes little strong-arm things if we needed businesses to help out a little bit if there were some, if there were some issues. But it stayed that way because the people who ran it, the residents, could work all the time on it. You know, when you were the chairman of that parade, you basically spent a year of your time working on that parade. Actually, if you were doing the, the years I was there, the 1973 parade, you started before the 1972 parade was run, going out and getting the bands, and working for floats, and all the different stars, and everything that was going on. You started a year ahead of time. You know, when, when the city tried to get a little too involved, nobody was going to work, you know, nobody was going to go meet somebody in Hollywood at 9:00 at night to discuss the high school band coming in to play, or go somewhere to watch them play, you know, to see if they met the standards that were, were there. And that's why when, when you see a group of people, like George has put together, wanting to do it, support them, help them, you know, where we can to move it forward, you know, the contacts are needed. If there's, you know, sponsorships, you guys know a lot of people, you know, to help out, who can help, you know, and I think that's where the benefit is. Parade routes and things like that, you know, probably over the years, it might change, you know, but I think you give it the first time through. I thought it was great, you know, our, our little Christmas parade, the first year, it was a cute little parade, you know, that type of thing. And, and the folks who put it together did a good job getting out there and trying to put it together. Second year, it was even bigger and better. Why? Because they could keep working on it. They, they had the time, they had the resources, they had the willingness to do it and the desire. And I think that's what's so important about, you know, this, this group continuing it on, and that they'll be passing it on to other people, and other people want to get involved. You know, I look at, for a lot of years, the, you know, what we had here in West Covina with the Fourth of July celebration, we had that raised money for MDA for many, many years, you know, and, you know, it unfortunately, over time, you know, the variety of reasons, people who, you know, you, you run it for 30 years, and you just can't do it anymore, and there aren't enough people who can step in and do it, those types of things. But it worked for a long time, and hopefully, this is the start of, you know, there'll be a group of people, my grandkids or my grandkids' grandkids, who'll be talking about the parade that started when they were kids, you know, 30, 40, 50 years from now. Another prime example is the Lions, what they've been doing. Yes, the help they get from the city is putting up banners and waiving fees that, you know, so the money goes to who they, they want to, but then you have people like Vicky and various people and Herb, you know, the Lions, who have put this together for 50 years. Reason is very simple. The last few years, a lot of it's been Vicky, you know, and as the spearhead with it, but that's what you have. You have some, you have a group of people who want to keep it going, and they help the community. So I hope you, you know, please support their desires to do it, and utilize your expertise where, you know, where they can get the help, you know, and the advice that they need. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Next, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, staff, and members of the community. My name is Wang Wen Zhang, and I'm the West Covina Library Manager. And I have a couple of programs I would like to make about library programs coming up. Well, the tax season is here, so again, this year, West Covina Library will host a free tax preparation assistant program series on five Saturdays, starting from February the 1st to April the 4th. Now here are the dates, February the 1st, 15th, March the 7th, 12th, and April the 4th. So this program is sponsored by Cal Poly Pomona. If you earned under $54,000 in last year, seniors, disabled, or have limited English language skills, you can have your federal and state tax returns done by, for free by an IRS-certified Cal Poly Pomona volunteer. The program begins at 10:00 in the morning on each of these days, 10 to 4, and the first come first served, no reservations required. Another program I wanted to mention is, starting from this January, the library will begin a building new computer skill program series, once a month, on every fourth Tuesday at 11:00, 11 to 12. So training is free to the public, limited space, so please sign up at the information desk. I also wanted to mention that our library meeting room will be used as a poll place for the March election. The early voting will take place three days right before the election day. That would be Saturday, February the 29th, and March the 1st, which is Sunday, and Monday, March the 2nd, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. On the election day, Tuesday, March the 3rd, the voting begins at 7:00, 7 to 8:00 p.m. And the library will also serve as a vote-by-mail drop-off site. A locked vote-by-mail ballot drop-off box will be placed in the library from February the 3rd to March the 3rd. Thank you very much for your time. We have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much, Win-Wen. Next, please.
Colleen Rizzotti.
Good evening, members of the community, city council and staff. Thank you. I'm Colleen Rizzotti, your elected city treasurer, member of the Finance and Audit Committee. I thought since we have a new leadership, that I would kind of reiterate some of the role that the city treasurer takes on. So Section 2-71 states that the duties of the Office of the City Treasurer shall be as followed: to review and present monthly investment policy and report; to participate in investment strategy discussions; to participate in the development of the investment policy; to serve as a member of the Audit Committee; and to perform other duties at the discretion of the City Council. Any duties or responsibilities not specified are delegated to the city, delegated to the city treasurer, are the responsibility of the Chief Finance Officer. So, I am doing my duties. So tonight, I'm here to talk about the investment report that ends November 30th, 2019. California Government Code, Section 53646, requires that the city report detailed information on all of our security, investment, and money of the cities, and to report the market value of the investments held. California Government Code, Section 53601, and the city's investment policy defines the types of investments that are allowed. The city's investment policy and the last revision was adopted by City Council, July 2nd, 2019. The city's investment policy has set a primary goal of the portfolio management for safety, liquidity, and yield. So tonight, I'd like to discuss the investment report that's in front of you in your packet. The city's investment policy has set the primary goals of the portfolio management, again, safety, liquidity, and yield. The city's surplus funds are deposited in the Los Angeles County Investment Pool, LASIP, and the Local Agency Investment Fund, LAIF. Chandler Asset Management also has some of our investment funds, and as November 30th, 2019, the investment portfolio has a market value of $53,799,179. What I'd like to bring to your attention is that currently, we have liquid assets of Chandler currently has an investment of $5.2 million of our money. We started out in 2016 with an investment of $35 million. Those funds have been transferred and deposited into the highest paying yield that we could currently find that keeps the money liquid and safe, which is LAIF and SEFIT. Also, be aware that while the bottom line shows that we have a current market value of $60,637,000, only $51,446 are actually liquid. Some of that money includes the successor agency, and those are earmarked for certain projects. So when you look at your bottom line, please be aware that that is not the true liquid monies that is available for usage. I'd like to give some public announcements. On Wednesday, January 22nd, at 6:00, the Audit and Finance Committee will be holding a meeting on the third floor at the MRC Room. For any of you that would like to attend, please join us. Some of the things that'll be on the agenda is the review of the expenditures and revenue that has come in from July 1st up till November 30th. We also, I have also asked that the city manager, which he has done, provide a copy of the current contract for the auditing firm, Rams, for our review. On Monday, January 27th, the Finance Director and I have a meeting with a few financial folks to discuss some of the investments that could possibly yield us some additional interest, and looking at the LAIF and the SEFIT account, and moving some money from there, all, all the, as, excuse me, while always keeping at the forefront liquidity, safety, and the highest yield possible for the city's return. So that is my current report. It is recommended that the city council receive and file this investment report for the month ending November 30th, 2019. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Colleen. Next, please. Is it, okay, anyone want to address to council? Are you sure? Okay, go ahead, come. Would you please fill out the yellow card, please?
I come to you, Mayor Tam Wu. Can I, can I get a little lower? Huh? Oh, my name is Skinny and Beautiful. But I go by another name. I go by Lisa Mayo. Okay. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to thank, I wanted to come and thank the city for helping me out when I worked on that project with the kids and doing that music video, "My God is Always Good to Me." I was able, obviously, to get 25 kids from the surrounding schools, even little munchkins that came in that one day, but I wanted to thank you because it was a community event where I was able to get a lot of the kids from the high schools to come in and work on this project. But I, because of that, and because of your help, I was able to submit it to film festivals, and it did win an award. So I will be going to New York to accept this award coming up. It'll be in July, August 1st. And also, I would like to be able to recognize these kids that were there, and I'm not quite sure how to do it to get through the schools to help, because obviously, it does say "My God is Always Good to Me," although when you saw the film, it was not a religious film at all. It was about anti-bullying and the power of kindness. So I don't know, I need your help in this area, so I come to you, asking you for your humble help. And also because I will be doing another production, probably a PSA, on domestic violence, and that's going to be coming up in, in February. Thank you, Councilman Johnson, for always being my adversary and always helping me out. So I thank each and every one of you, and may the force be with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you so much. Okay, so, Councilman Johnson, don't forget to help her. Okay, anyone else?
I promise to do.
Okay, and, okay, maybe money, okay, so, funding. Anyone want to speak to, address to council? I'm going to close it. Okay, one, going two, going three, okay? Overall communication come to an end. Now we move into next agenda. I want to talk about next agenda. Okay, this is kind of new, okay? We want to try to have, again, city setup, like we have 120,000 of a stakeholder, and we hired the CEO, that is our city manager, around the city. So a lot of the time, we don't know what's going on, so a lot of the time, we want the city managers kind of report back, and we want them to report in public regarding what's going on, and some of the new thing addressed to not only the city council, but to the public. So the public will aware, aware of what is new, what's coming up, so in that way, the public transparent, that we know, everybody know what's going on, what will happen to our city, what kind of development, what kind of new app, so we won't have a city manager report. So, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Company, take it over.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much. Just wanted this evening to provide a very brief snapshot in terms of some various projects that are in progress. First, want to make mention, we have a new city app. For those of you that have smartphones, and I think most people do, if you go to the App Store and look up Go Request... App Store and look up Go Request, you'll be able to find this. It's customized to West Covina. There's ways to submit on the first page on the left, any number of different issue types, and there's also a catch-all field called "Other Issues." It's really easy to use. If you want to turn in some graffiti, you can go to the app, click graffiti, add a picture. Instantly, it'll come up with the GPS coordinates, and it goes directly to the person that drives the graffiti truck. It'll get back to you immediately with the disposition. Thank you for the input, and let you know when it's been cleared. So it's a very efficient way for us all to turn in service requests for a myriad of types of issues. So far, we're getting a fair amount of utilization. I think as of today, we'd harvested north of 800 requests, but we think that's going to take off. I wanted to mention, the city has, as part of its municipal code, a false alarm ordinance. And we were having a number of problems with administration. I think frankly, it wasn't rolled out very well. What we teach in customer services, for every complaint we get, there's 10 complaints we don't get. If you multiply by 10, I can tell you, this wasn't getting us any compliments, and it wasn't working very well. So I've made the decision to shut that down for now. We're going to leave the ordinance in place, not ask the council to repeal it, encourage people to continue to register their $10 per year charge. But we're going to take another look at this and reset it. For now, we're going to conclude our relationship with the vendor that was responsible for charging people for false alarms. It just wasn't working very well. Pleased to report, we did a energy conservation project. The council had this on their agenda, I believe it was in May, at the request of Councilmember Castellanos. And as of the end of December, we had converted just south of 8200 streetlights to LED. This is a program that's yielded a lot of compliments. On the residential streets, we set a brightness of about 3,500 Kelvin. If you wander around outside during daylight, that's about 5,000. On the arterial streets, we're at about 4,500. And I can tell you, when you go for a walk in the evening, these lights are very effective, and they're very energy efficient. Once we pay off the cost of the conversion, we'll yield a savings of about $200,000 a year. So I'm pleased to report, we're finding some economies and efficiencies in the city operations. Whoops, I skipped over a pretty important one. You can tell I'm new at this. We're going to have a badge pinning coming up Saturday for our five newest recruits. One of the issues we were trying to address prospectively was a problem with overtime in the fire department. We were down in terms of the three shifts, A shift, B shift, and C shift. I mean, fire department's been running that classic schedule for decades. If anybody was out sick, and you're already down five, you're going to be burning an awful lot of overtime. We think once we get nominally, at least fully staffed, we'll be able to make a major effect on that overtime statistic. Ideally, I'd like to have some over-hires on each shift, because we just know somebody's going to be sick, and somebody's going to put in for a deserved vacation. But we think by being fully staffed with firefighters, and this required the cooperation of our Fire Association through a collective bargaining amendment, we're going to be staffed up to 79, which is something I'm quite proud of. And this is, this is the faces of your new firefighters. Help me. Oh, here we are. We've got 20 buildings, and 19 of them have leaking roofs. I've been on the roofs of almost all of our city buildings over the last couple of months. And I can tell you, we've got a lot of work to do in terms of the city's capital improvement program. In each case, it was a question of fixing the hole in the roof and recognizing that we need a whole new roof. This is Fire Station 2. We were able to find a quite good contractor who met all the city's requirements for posting insurance and Department of Labor Relations certificates and all the rest. On Fire Station 2, we needed to do a lot of preventative maintenance, make sure the gutters were fixed, make sure every opening was O'Henry'd, et cetera. It was a big problem for us because it was leaking like a sieve. For about $7,000, we were able to affect a patch, pull the roof tiles off each side of the apparatus bay, about a five-foot dimension around that, repaper it, retile it, and put it back together. It's going to need a whole new roof, which is going to cost a couple hundred thousand dollars within the next two to three years. The sooner the better. But we're making progress on every single one of these facilities, and we've got this contractor just marching from building to building. As I mentioned with the fire department, we've been quite successful with some new recruits. We're going to be up now to 88 sworn. We've, in the budget authorized 99. I'd like to get to 120 if the budget permitted. The rule of thumb nationwide is you want to have about one sworn officer for every 1,000 population. At 88, we're making a big dent in terms of deployment, but we still have a ways to go. And this is the face of your new police officers. This one was a real joy. I'm happy to announce, we've gone through a long process of procurement. This is a picture of our chief standing in front of one of our five new police cars, which was delivered to us yesterday. This is through Bob Wondery's Ford in Alhambra. They had to dress them in the classic colors. They come black, but we wanted them black and white, and we're going to get them on the street quick. And we've got six more in the queue after that. With a fleet of 30 black and whites, we probably should be buying 15 a year, because these are not just casual-use vehicles. They go from officer to officer, shift to shift. They run constantly. But when they get high mileage, when you're in one that's got 94,000 miles, and you wonder whether the thing's going to get you back to the barn, we have a terrific police department, and we need to provide them with first-class equipment. But we're making good progress toward that. This is also a joy to present. I think one of the city's biggest assets is its employees, and this is a face of one of many, who just does a terrific job for us. This is our IT manager, Sean Granger. Sean took on a project just because he knew we had a need that really transcended department lines. He was at a meeting of his fellow IT professionals, and somebody mentioned that there was an SB 2 grant available that the city could use those monies to get a new building permit processing system. And he was successful. We got word of preliminary approval of a grant of some $310,000, and we don't see any impediments to getting the final approval and getting a new permit system. But it's thanks to Sean doing work, which is out of his job description above and beyond. I'd just like to thank him publicly. And then finally, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes in City Hall. I think the third floor of City Hall is just a bedlam of activity around one of the major initiatives, which is pension obligation bonds. The city has an unfunded pension liability of north of $185 million, and we're going to recommend to council the issuance of POBs in the range of about $158 million. And so this is a date of key milestones. We want to have the bonds sold. We're now paying CalPERS interest rate of 7% in the taxable municipal bond market. Now, we're going to be in the range of 4%. There's different yields within that total of $158 million. But we think by so doing, we can save a couple million dollars every year for the life of the bonds. And that's all I've got for this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much, city managers. Okay, well done. Okay, and I want to say this, okay? Again, we, the city, okay, run by the city managers, and we are like a board of directors, okay, and represent the resident. So we want to emphasize accountability, accountability of the step, and that's why the city manager report is important. We want to see what's the progress, what's going on in our city, okay? And I want to say this, and I hopefully, every time we have a City Council meeting, you're going to bring in, okay, more of a, okay, report to our resident, that's what's going on in our city, okay, which business, like Chief of Life, when it's going to do grand opening. So I think a lot of residents are really concerned about that. So all this transparent, we want to bring it to our resident, that they're going to know, okay, our city have a lot of things going on, and no other than they're looking around, I think they should come on to the source of the city, and city manager present to our resident. But thank you so much, as it is well done. I look like, I feel very confident, okay, accountability, but thank you for that. And other than that, we are going to move on to next agenda, is going to consent calendar, and any other city council, you want to pull any item? And if none, okay, and do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second you. Okay, so we have a motion from, okay, Councilman Castellano, and we have a second by Councilman Johnson. Roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, motion approved 5-0. Now we're moving to our first item. Okay, move on to, let me see, consideration of legislative matter, SB 50, huh? Number nine?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I would like to request that we not take up number nine tonight. I'd like to pull it from your agenda. We want, we'll bring it back at your next meeting. Thank you.
Yeah. Hey, did I get the memo? Did I get the memo? Number nine has been pulled, the ADU of, okay, okay, the thing, okay, so, so I'm going to move on to, again, agenda number, this is number nine? Number nine, right? Number 10? So number 10, considerations of legislative matter, SB 50 and SB 266, 266. Okay, Mr. Manager, who's going to present this agenda? This is a report.
Our Assistant City Manager, Mark Persico, will present on current legislative matters.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I've got a quick report on two legislative matters. The first is SB 50 that you've already heard about a little bit from one of our planning commissioners, the chairman. This bill briefly attempts to boost housing production in this state, but it overrides local zoning authority to do so. If the bill passes, it would allow up to four residential units on every single-family zoned property or any residentially zoned property in town, effectively ending single-family zoning in the state. It would also allow for properties which are located within one-half mile of what are defined as major transit stops. Housing could be built, buildings could be built up to 55 feet tall, and parking standards would be dropped to a half a stall per unit. A little bit of history, this bill has been around for quite a while, and has been through a number of amendments. This is actually the second time that Senator Weiner has tried this. In the previous legislative session, there was SB 827, had pretty much the same provisions in it. This bill, SB 50, was introduced in December of last year, been amended a total of four times, and just a couple of days ago, was moved from the Appropriations Committee to the Rules Committee. And even though it has tremendous opposition from virtually every level of local government, as well as county governments, it certainly looks like it's on rails and could be coming to a vote as early as next week. Our lobbyist has been very engaged in this opposition, and has represented the city at virtually all of the hearings that have happened on this. Another bill that we'd like to bring to your attention is SB 266. This is, when CalPERS rules were reformed in 2012, there were some changes that happened, and not all local governments were aware of those changes. There were some contracts that were put in place by some agencies that were then subsequently disallowed. And what that meant is that the local agencies were on the hook to pay those retirement benefits. We don't believe here in West Covina that we have any of those, but it's only after the fact when an employee retires that some of these issues come to light. One of the other provisions of SB 266 is that it completely absolves CalPERS of any responsibility, and pushes all of the, even though they're the pension fund manager and paid very handsomely for that, it shifts all the responsibility to the local level. This bill technically passed last year and was waiting to be queued up for the governor to sign. It was waiting for what's called en grossing and enrolling. It never got out of that phase. Senator Leva apparently got some back-channel communication that it probably would not pass, so she withdrew the bill. She has until the 31st, just, what is that, nine days from now, to potentially reintroduce the bill. It's unclear what's going to happen, but again, our legislative representative, Jason Gonzalez, has also been active in this bill. The action before the council tonight is to authorize, there's two opposition letters to authorize the mayor to sign those. The first one is SB 50. The letter for SB 266 may need to be updated, depending upon what happens. If nothing happens in the next nine days, then Senator Leva may just reintroduce a whole new bill under a whole new number. She's got until, I believe, the 28th of February to do that. Again, this is something that we are tracking. So I think the second motion would be to authorize the mayor to either sign the letter that's in here, or a similar letter of opposition. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Mark. Okay, council, any discussion, any question? Go ahead, Persico.
Thank you for bringing this back to us. I appreciate it, because SB 50 is critically important. There is a deadline this Friday and next Friday, and the last date it introduces is actually February 22nd. But I would like to approve these letters. I go back to the same thing I brought up before. I appreciate Assistant City Manager Persico's report on this, but where is our lobbyist? We hear he's up there working hard. What has he done on behalf of the city? The letters that we're sending are from the League of California Cities. They're not particular to us. They're something that the league prepared, so what are we paying him for? What is he actually doing on behalf of the city to inform us before we're, you know, three days out from something like this being passed? I mean, we found out about SB 266 and SB 50 through me. You know? My job is not to be the lobbyist for the city of West Covina. It's also not to be the legislative analyst for the city of West Covina, you know? And I'm getting very frustrated with this. 266 passed without the city being informed, and it has huge consequences should it go forward, because the bill says if we pay an annuitant too much, even though CalPERS gives us the final number, so let's say an annuitant gets $1,000 a month, and he was only, or she was only supposed to get 800, the city has to pay CalPERS back that 200 extra, and pay that annuitant the $200 difference for the rest of the time that they get their pension. So it's not a small matter for us. Granted, we may not have that problem, but is that really a risk we want to take and do not know about it? And thankfully, it got pulled from en grossing and enrolling. So I'm just back to my same frustrations, but at least in this case, we can get letters out there.
So Councilmember Shoemaker, are you going to make a motion?
Yes.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I definitely 100% want to second that motion. We need to have the mayor sign those letters and get them out right away. And I do agree with Councilmember Shoemaker. You know, like, I think we discussed that we need our lobbyists to come down and explain to us. We've talked about the last council meeting. We need to know who they are, and what they're doing for us, and we need to be able to ask some questions. So as far as tonight, I want to second the motion.
Okay, and any council member want to discuss, any question?
No, just echo the sentiment.
Okay, and so basically, we have a motion, and we have a second, and roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, okay, motion approved 5-0, so I'm going to sign the opposition letter, okay, and send to the supplemental. So we moving to the next agenda, is the Fourth of July Enforcement Report. So, Mr. City Managers, who are going to present this, that report?
This report will be presented by Police Chief Bell.
Yeah, thank you, chief. Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
You got the clicker here? Okay, got it. Well, good evening, Mayor, City Council, members of the viewing audience and the staff. Today, I'm going to be presenting a Fourth of July deployment. It's been put together by both fire and police, and I think this is what the citizens have been waiting for, to see something like this. And I think that by doing it early, it'll bring some assurance to the residents that something will be done this Fourth of July. Mayor Protem Leti Lopez-Viado has requested from the Police Department and the Fire Department an update and an outline for the enforcement operations related to this year's Fourth of July weekend activities. Over the past several years, public safety has responded to an average of about 225 additional calls. Now, this is generally on the Fourth of July. The goal for this year's Fourth of July enforcement is to saturate the public with information regarding the use of both dangerous and self-insane fireworks, coupled with a rigorous enforcement action leading up to, during, and after the Fourth of July holiday event. The focus of enforcement will be on July 3rd, as I stated, and July 4th. Leading up to the Fourth, both departments will certainly receive calls and deal with those calls accordingly. The enforcement plan will consist of the following actions: planning, advertisement, deployment, enforcement, and an after-action report. In the planning phase, the police and fire management will develop timelines and collaborative strategy for prevention, response, hazardous mitigation, enforcement, and disposition of illegal fireworks on the Fourth of July holiday. These plans will be placed on an ICS form and distributed to all the working personnel during the incident briefing. Briefing is a time where we come together and we make sure that everyone is on the same page and that the rules will be followed, and also allows us to make any final adjustments accordingly. Additionally, an Incident Action Plan, IAP, will be developed by the Unified Command Team. The Police and Fire Department will partner with each other, will partner with other city staff to obtain and display two banners. The first banner will be put up at Amar and Azusa, and the second banner will go up at Glendore and West Covina Parkway. The purpose of the banners is to provide information to the citizens that no fireworks are permitted in the City of West Covina. We plan on deploying the banners in the months of either April or May. We'll decide that as we get closer. We also plan to send out repeat public service announcement, PSAs, that will be broadcast via all current social media platforms, including Nixle, Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. And we are looking to send these notifications out every week in the eight weeks preceding the Fourth of July. In addition, similar public notifications should appear in the Discover newsletter, probably in the months of May or June, and the city mobile message board will be deployed to very conspicuous locations with high vehicle traffic to educate motorists on the fireworks activities. And this will be done two weeks prior to the holiday. A Unified Command will be deployed with the Police and Fire Departments. During each day of the operations, police and fire personnel will hold a joint incident briefing and discuss responsibilities, expectations, and strategies each day of the operation, as stated before. The Police and Fire Department will deploy additional resources to include four three-man units consisting of two police officers and one firefighter, as personnel is available at the time. One additional public safety dispatcher will be added and exclusively dedicated to the efficient and timely broadcasting of fireworks-related calls. We will also add one dedicated fire or police field supervisor, and this is something we didn't have last year, whose sole responsibility is to direct the activities of the involved personnel, manage the call value, and ensure timely service delivery. Regularly scheduled patrol officers and fire personnel will generally focus on other calls for service. This is the ones that we put out normally, but could be used to help out with fireworks calls, to help mitigate and reduce response and delays. Fire Station 2 will be the host location for all confiscated fireworks and stage of fireworks. The Fire Department will be responsible for the State Fire Marshal notification and the disposition of any seized fireworks. Any actual or suspected explosives located will be disposed of through the department's standard operating procedure. The police and fire teams will use federal, state, and local laws to enforce the firework violations. Absent any bona fide public safety demand, to the contrary, assigned personnel should refrain from other enforcement activities. And these are the four two-man units that we are putting out with the fire personnel. They're going to be dedicated just for fireworks calls. An after-action report will be generated by the Police and Fire Department directed to the City Manager regarding deployment efforts, and this plan shall be used in preparation for next year's fireworks activities. The fiscal impact, we'll be putting out four firefighters, eight police officers, one police supervisor, one dedicated dispatcher. The impact to the city is roughly $16,819.80. It is recommended that the City Council approve the Fourth of July enforcement and deployment plan. The Fire Chief and I can answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. And how about the Fire Chief, you want to say something?
No. He collaboratively put that together, and it's, he spoke for both of us.
Okay, very good. Okay, now we're going to go back to our City Council discussion and question. Who has the first question? Mayor Protem Leti.
I have a few questions. The first one, did you ever get a chance to look at Elmani's Fourth of July enforcement that I've heard that they did one year that was very effective?
Elmani does have a pretty good program. It's tied into their CAD RMS. I don't have all the particulars about it, but I did not look at the actual plan that they have. Right now, with our staffing and the way our CAD RMS is being transferred now, I didn't feel like it was, that's something we could do right now. But it is in the plan to look at it in the future.
My next question is, I actually do have one issue with this. I don't see consequences. And are there fines, penalties that will occur? I know this is going to fiscally impact us, but would there be fines? I know, and the reason why I bring up Elmani is because they actually gave a card out and passed it to all the children of the school and said, "No fireworks. If you do, first offense is $1,000," or something to that extent. And so if you put up all these signs and banners, "No illegal fireworks," obviously we've had that around and nobody's, well, they're not listening to it. What prevents them from continuing after you confiscate? A few hours later, they do it again. So that's, that's what I'd like to know.
Well, we didn't have up banners last year, nor did we have any PSA messages that went out the way we're doing it now. There are fines. We have a schedule of the fines that we will be issuing. We can put that on a card and maybe give it to the schools. That's something we can do. This plan is not set in stone. That is something I'll look at, but there are fines associated with it. Our goal is to cite, confiscate, and do whatever we can. That's the purpose of the supervisor being there, is so that we can get that enforcement out there. So if you would like to have the notification go to the parents, I think that's something that we can probably collaborate with the school to do.
I would actually like to see a fine that's listed, because if they don't, if they think it's not a big deal, I could cash out $20 if they're assuming, but it'd be nice to see what the penalty and what the fine would be. So if you post that, they know, hey, don't do that, so.
Fine $1,000 or something. So we have, so we have an municipal code, no fireworks in our fee schedule, and the fire code, fines for that. And there's also administrative code for the work we have to do to mitigate that confiscation. We can issue that as a municipal code violation when we go out there. And that is our plan, as we stated, we're going to follow state and local, federal, state, and local laws when we enforce this. Actually, last year, we didn't do that, as it was a new program. We were starting to learn how this was, and we will be issuing municipal code violations during that time and follow the fee schedule when appropriate.
Okay, well, if you're promoting it, they should, they should know what a fine is, because then they're going to be expecting, well, I do know about a fine, it's just a warning. And the biggest complaint we got last year was, they all got warnings, they all got warnings, and then multiple warnings. So I just wanted to prevent that.
We can post the signs, the fines.
I think, what Mayor Protem say, you need to put the dollar amount.
Yes.
So when the people see that $1,000, now they know this is, okay, it's a problem. So, and Councilman Castellano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I liked our recommendation. I liked the plan so far regarding dissemination on the Discover and the message boards and banners. I'd like to, and the school districts, I think we should partner with them, too. It's a great idea. Let's also ask our mall and our auto mall to, if we could borrow their LED boards, I think we have that agreement with them. Let's also ask Athens to see if they could in May and June include that in their mailers, maybe our utilities as well. I think that'll help.
Thanks.
With, with that dollar amount listed of the fine. Thank you.
Want to answer, or you okay?
Yes, I, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's good ideas. And then we go to the Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, also, like I say, when we're, when we're letting them know what the fine is, like I say, either put it on the banners. I mean, because if they don't get those, they may not live in the City of West Covina, but they're coming over to West Covina to visit their family and they're playing their fireworks, they may not get it. But what I'm just saying, if everybody knows that the fine is, there's teeth in it. You know, we can say a fine, I don't want to see a $200, $300 fine, because if you're spending money on fireworks, sometimes you don't care. We have to make it worthwhile. We have to say, you know what, your first offense, that's what it is. There's no coming and slapping your hands the first time. We catch you with illegal fireworks, there's plenty of signings out there, there's plenty of notices out there saying, "This is what it is." So they will have to be aware, they can't say they didn't know. So we really have, this year, I really want to see some teeth into it. I know last year, we had a couple missed communications. I know our chief was on vacation during the Fourth of July, there was some miscommunication. So I know there was an incident on my street, that they were caught with fireworks, and as soon as the police officer left, they lit them up again, and we had to call them again. So I'm just saying, the first time they're caught, it has to be there. They won't do it again. So I'm looking forward to see what we're coming up with, something to make it worthwhile, to let them know that West Covina is very serious. One biggest complaint we did after the Fourth of July was, before the Fourth of July, they started going off like crazy, and after the Fourth of July, they're going off like crazy. We need to make sure that it goes a few days ahead of time out there catching them and afterwards. So let's put some teeth into it, and then maybe the following year, they'll start thinking more about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Johnson, and Councilman Shoemaker.
I hope I heard you correctly, Chief Capelli. It sounds like we're able to assess, but it's based on some formula of actual cost. Did I hear you correctly, or is there an actual fee schedule?
I'd have to look exactly at the fee schedule, what it says. We have in there, there's, there's a fine for violation of fireworks in the City of West Covina, it states what fireworks, not allowed anything, not even the poppers or anything.
Yeah.
And there's, there could be a municipal code violation, administrative violation fee for that, and I'm not exactly sure that's what it is. Read exactly what it is. And I can get back to you on that one and find out that. And that would be our, our fine for them, for anybody who violates that, that code.
But you're not sure if it has an actual amount.
I'm not sure what exact amount it states goes to our administrative fee fine or an actual $1,000 fine.
Mr. City Attorney, can you look into that? And that way, we can confirm and make sure that we have an ordinance that makes sense and has the teeth that the majority of the council has stated that they would like.
Commonly, it's $1,000 for fireworks violation in most of the LA County cities.
And that may be the answer, I just would like confirmation.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for actually going through this and making this happen. I do look forward to this, and I'm pretty sure our residents will be thankful, so thank you for that. I just want to make sure that code enforcement is the key here, and we don't, we actually do what we say we'll do. So I just want to see that, and I look forward to this, and I'm sure our residents will be happy, so thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve.
A second. So we have a motion moved by Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado, and we have a second from Councilman Johnson. Roll call, please.
Councilman Castellano?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, motion approved 5-0, now moving to item number 12. Okay, consideration of a request from Mayor Protem Leti Lopez-Viado regarding a city-sponsored Fourth of July patriot, okay, event. So, City Manager, who is going to make the report, please?
Mr. Mike Cressip will present this staff report.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
There we go. Evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, audiences, everyone in the audience. Tonight, I'm presenting on a request from Mayor Protem Leti Viado regarding city-sponsored Fourth of July event. In the past, we've had several different kinds of events. Until 2018, we had an annual Fourth of July fireworks show at different locations. We worked with the school district, and our most recent show was at Big League Dreams Sport Complex. Had about, we averaged anywhere from 6,000 to 10,000 people annually. So we're just going to go through here, so that's one event we've done. Last year, in, excuse me, I'm sorry, last year, without having a fireworks show, we did a summer concert with a, with a laser light show as part of a concert, like a patriotic-themed summer concert. So in this report, we'll be going through some options that you can look at and consider, and after that, if you provide direction, we will do what we can. We've also been working with the West Covina Buzz, starting this summer, and they are a group, community group that has come to us requesting to do a community event that ends at Cortez Park. So that is one of the options we'll be providing as well. Option number one will be Fourth of July fireworks show at Big League Sports Complex. On the screen, we have, we have a breakdown of what the costs are for the event. This event in the past would average about $65,000 to $80,000, depending on venue and show. This year, with no contract, fireworks have gone up, so the main increase for this event and the reason it would cost a total of $115,000, $125,000 is because of increase in fireworks. We don't have an ongoing agreement, and dislaid in the game, there is a, there's a premium on fireworks, the people, the operators that do fireworks, so there's an additional cost for that. And then the other big expense for the fireworks show at Big League Dreams would be traffic control. The event we had there was fantastic, the venue was great inside, but as the event ended and people were leaving, there were some technical issues with traffic control and things like that. So we would need to call in an outside vendor to probably close the street and handle traffic control for the public entering and exiting the facility. So, like I said, the first option would be a fireworks show for a cost of $115,000, $125,000. The next option would be a parade, a community organized parade with a pancake, breakfast, car show, and picnic that would end at Cortez Park. As George from the Buzz expressed earlier, it'd be a route that starts at South Hills High School, works down Cameron, and comes down Cortez and finishes into the park. The cost for this event would be about $31,000. That would be for public safety, community service staff, and traffic control. That route has not been formalized yet, so we would still need to go to the Traffic Committee and get an approved traffic plan, but it definitely is something that can be done. Our third option is a Fourth of July drone show with an evening parade. This would take place at South Glendore Avenue, the same venue of the Christmas parade that we just had. It was, it was a successful route, it's something that we've done, we have an approved traffic plan, and we've executed that a couple times now, so that is a route that we know that we can carry out. On the screen, we have a picture of what the drone show would kind of look like. The cost for the drone show would be about $20,000, and all the costs combined, that would be approximately $41,000. So that is, that's option number three. Our fourth option would be the same thing we did in 2019, it'd be a laser light show in conjunction with a summer concert. All the costs are listed above, and that would cost approximately $35,000. This is currently funded in the budget between the foundation and our, and our community services account, so there are no additional appropriations for that. The fifth option we have would be to provide both option two and four, so it would be a combined event of a morning a combined event of a morning patriotic parade and a laser light show in the evening at its concert. Logistically, that does cost some issues for us with, with the fireworks enforcement and everything else that we have going on, but it is possible. It would be a cost of approximately $64,000. Additional funding would be necessary, and if that was selected, we would make that adjustment at the mid-year. You know, we are seeking direction on this, so if there are any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them now.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Council, any question? Okay, Mayor Proton?
Well, thank you very much. When I was originally told, no 4th of July, there's nothing we can do, that was just unacceptable to me, because there's always an option. And I'm, I am impressed that you were able to give more than one option. So I do thank you for that. We have five options. I'm all about community, and everybody knows, you know, community is a big thing. I do support George 100%. There's, the point of these special events is to bring people together. So it's not about the big show, the big, I mean, granted, we'd love to have that, but I do understand that the budget and everything can't afford it. But we do have community involvement. We do have, you know, alternatives, and I'd like to actually move forward with the option two. And I do appreciate, I commend George for taking the lead on this and, you know, starting something, starting a tradition. And I'd love to have traditions in the city of West Covina, and this could be the start of a beautiful tradition. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Okay, Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'm also 100% for option number two, and she's making a motion. I would second it, that I am on that committee with George and with Herb Redholtz. It's a fantastic committee. They brought up different options of not doing this, and we have a collaboration, we have quite a few residents. They keep joining, they keep wanting to get involved. And what we've talked to them says, you want to start a South Hills High School and go down to Citrus and go to, and they love it. People can come out from the yards, they can sit in their chairs and talk to their neighbors. And then, when the parade passes them, the streets can be opened back up, and then they can go over to Cortez Park and finish it. Plus, you have the pancake, you can have the pancake breakfast over there, over Cortez, and with the parade going down Citrus, you're not blocking Cortez Street End at all. So the, you know, residents that don't, the elderly people that may not want to stay, they can do the pancake breakfast, and they can leave, or they can join the parade. They can walk out on Citrus, watch the parade. And I'm also really enthusiastic about the car show. I know a lot about car shows. I've been doing it a lot of years, guys. When he says 50 cars, I can get in there, I guarantee you can get more in there. People love seeing classic cars. That can be part of it. The classic cars will be parked before the parade goes, so the cars won't be intertwined with the children and the bands going down. They can already be there. So when everybody gets to Cortez Park, they're already parked. We can have the vendors down there. I think it's going to be fantastic for us. So if she's making a motion, I'm seconding it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Johnson, and Jessica?
I just have a few questions, because obviously, I want to have the best event we can for our community. And I've always wondered year after year, and now that I'm on the council, I can actually ask these questions. So when we talk about the cost for the Police Department, Fire Department, are those additional costs, or are you just calculating that these officers that would normally be here will be here?
That is actually additional cost. Those are additional officers that would be brought in just for the event. They're not, not the regular officers that patrol, anything like that. It is an additional crew that comes in for that. On fire, sometimes, some of that can be alleviated, because if, you know, if they're not on call. But for PD, it is 100% staff that come in, and there is additional staff for fire as well. That's why fires cost isn't as high.
And traffic control, why would it be 10,000 to go from South Hills to Cortez Park?
The reason being, we do not, we no longer have a streets crew. So there's a couple factors. We don't, we don't have, you know, with, with, when we contracted out some of our department, that was a portion we lost. So there's, there's the manpower aspect that we'd have to pay for, and it being a holiday, there's going to be additional cost from that. And then we don't have a lot of the equipment, stuff we don't have before. So we're going to have to rent barricades, things of that nature. So there are companies out there that we would go get bids from that will provide us everything for the road closure, plus the manpower to man those road closures.
And if I understand correctly, you said option four is fully funded?
That is correct. It's in, it's in our budget. We have, we have limited funds for special events, and then we also have donations to the, to the foundation, the Community Services Foundation, that goes towards special events.
Okay, so we would be able to use those funds for option two and pay for it?
That is correct. We would just not have the light show at the summer concert.
And then my next question is, why wouldn't we be able to combine option two and three at Cortez? I know we would have to make an extra appropriation, but...
That is a possibility, and if this council decides that, that's something we could do.
Because that way, it would be more like what we used to have at Cameron Park, which was the day carnival and events, and then the fireworks across the street at night. So, but this way, you would have the parade during the day, the carnival and car show throughout the day, and the vendors, and then at night, maybe possibly have the drone show.
I want to, okay, follow up, Councilmember Shoemaker, okay. I have a concern to combine two and three, because it's just kind of, okay, costs 72,000. I'm more kind of thinking about, we have the drone show last year, okay?
No, we had a laser show.
We had a laser light show last year.
Laser, laser, not drone show, laser show. Laser show about $8,000. So, so, so meaning we already have a summer concert, that's already well-funded, right? Okay, and $8,000, this, I think this is already kind of approved from last year's budget?
Correct.
On the, on the, on number four. So, so if we have led, they already said, right now, we just have to find, if we go through the option number two with George, I have some question for you, if you're ready. Okay, and the concern I have, see, I will support you 100%. I like community. You can see, I'm a community guy, but I just want to, because it's the first time, I just had a couple questions, see, can help you to kind of organize, okay, have a more vendor, and I have some question maybe you can answer. So maybe you can find that to do it.
So are you thinking two and four?
But, but the one thing is, is I'm thinking about, okay, if we go to the, okay, the, the, maybe, the, okay, well-funded, already funded number four, and we have, okay, parade next day, okay, and with a lot of vendor and a full venue under Cortez Park, and possible that is kind of budget-wise, is more feasible for me to see. We just have to find $31,000, okay, and get some kind of sponsorship and something for, for this event. So I'm thinking about possible, this is much more feasible, so we don't make it too much dam, okay, into our budget. So this is my, my suggestion.
And that was actually one of the questions that I didn't get to. I'm fine with two and four also. But, and thank you for coming up, because my question is basically, when something is community organized, there's usually some community assets put in.
Sponsorship.
Yes. And I, yeah, and so I guess I'm, yeah, I guess I'm wondering what contribution there may be. I know you guys have put in a ton of work, but, and we want to make this happen. So is there anything on the table, any sponsorships?
Well, we do have, I did talk to West Covina Lions, and I guess Vicki was aware of us having this decision made today. And she was definitely all for it, you know, since it's a, a community event. So she kind of told me that she would give me the answer after the decision was made. She didn't want to give an answer, you know, before that. Other than that, you know, there is other, I have some volunteers, some resident volunteers that want to participate to help, you know, guide the, the event in many different ways. And I also have a couple of residents who want to donate their own money towards the event. But so far, this is all I have at the moment. Yeah, because it's such an unsure decision. Oh, that's good. All right, awesome. Thank you.
Okay, George, okay, I just want you to see how successful Christmas Children's Parade, the Kiwanis, okay, they did a second time.
Yes.
The first time, oh, it's very, very tough. I understand. I think I can tell, or file of us, or support your event.
Yes.
Okay, and you can tell, okay, and then we want the community, community, community participate, okay. It's not everything government, government sucks, okay. So we, we want the community coming in to help out, everybody pitch in. So, so my, my point basically is, okay, organization, sponsorship, vendor, okay, event, program, organized, okay, all this, you need to, okay, learn from Kiwanis the second time, okay, maybe bring their committee into it. And Lloyd was the committee of Kiwanis Club, and I think as Chinese Association, they help out too, and ask them to open their wallet to help you, okay. So I think they will help you with the manpower too. So you can have a Kiwanis, or CAWC, or any other group, Alliance, or any other lottery group, okay. So to find out the funding and, and to sponsor this event.
Right.
Because we don't want to use taxpayers' money.
Right, right.
I hope you understand, we want to use the sponsorship from maybe business. So you, you can ask everybody to sponsor $500, $1,000, like Kiwanis Club, they, they get a lot of sponsorship. I think this is the heart community is.
Yes.
So have community, group to get us, of the residents. So, so, and you have to make sure, this is the worry I have, in summertime, how many students they're coming out to, to march. For example, oh, we have all the high school, four high school from West Covina High, and the one from, okay, Covina Unified, and, and we have Nongales High. So we can have all, and junior high too. So can we have all their band, just kid to come out to, to match? I think this is what we want. It's our kid.
For sure.
And they would be very proud. So you have to organize, make sure the school district, you can see, today, we already have three school districts coming in. I think they will support you. And I think they can see the city support them, and in, meaning what, they will support your program for our community to get together. So, so this, I want to kind of help you, to warn you, and
Thank you.
And I will have all my connection to kind of impose to you, including the business, and to help you to sponsor, okay, the program. I think, because if it is cost $31,000, it's not too difficult to achieve, okay. And Lloyd Johnson is going to donate a lot of money, I can tell. Okay, he doesn't, he just forget it about his campaign, okay. So, and other city council you want to address, okay?
Mr. Mayor, if I may real fast, also, like I say, you know, we discussed that those who donate, we're planning on having a big banner at the park with the sponsorships, with their names on it, their business on it. And, you know, we have different sponsorships, whatever they'd like to do, maybe a gold sponsorship, a bronze, silver, how much they have, the more they give, the, they get to go up on top of this. So this is one of the things we discussed. And I, like I say, I see a lot of pride in the city coming back to it because of this event. I want to thank Councilwoman Lopez Viado, if I pronounced your name correctly. I've never said, what's the last time I ever, first time I've ever said her last name? You don't have to finally say her last name, for bringing us forward. And then with George, I want to thank you for jumping in there. I think it's going to be, and, Mr. Mayor, we do plan, me being on the committee, we do plan on jumping on this 100%, moving, moving ahead. Once it's, nothing we can do until the council voted on it, but once we okay it, we plan on, committee's planning on getting back together and moving forward.
I, I want to make a motion to approve the option number two and option number four. Already have the budget forward, so at least we have a two. Okay, and we just come up $31,000 for this program, so we want to support you. And we, all city council want to get their connection to help you to kind of recruit the people and vendor, and we need a lot of vendor, especially few. People love few thing and going around over there in, in the park. So, so anyway, I've motioned, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
If I could get clarification, I just want to make sure that we understand that the summer concert would be part of the summer concert series and not actually on the 4th of July.
Of course, this, but we will have very close the day, right? So we can still, last year is the day before, so this year, I don't know what time, okay, when's the day? I hope it can be maybe the, the day prior.
We can, yeah, we can do it, if you'd like it to be the third, that's something we can do. Normally, our summer concert series on Wednesdays, but being the third?
I think we should do it July 3rd, like last year.
Okay.
So it would be much cheaper for all those people to, to perform, for us to pay. And then July 4th, the Sunday, the morning, then we have a George, the, the West Covina Buzz to have a parade, and then we have all this carnival, okay, in all Cortez Park with all the vendor. So we have, almost have a one-night event already fun, and then, okay, we have a parade in the morning with this beautiful, and a lot of kids should be very happy to have that.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you for the clarification.
Can I add something? I would also like to add that I talked to Amy. She's the one who's in charge of the booths for any events in West Covina, and she said, I can, we can get as many booths as we want. We can include any businesses in West Covina and neighboring cities to, to participate in the event. And me and Lloyd, and Herb, and Susan Pootman, and Sue Gueno, and Glenn Kennedy, have all worked really hard to get this together, so we really appreciate this. Thank you so much.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much, George. See, you can get all the support, okay. So, and, and here, any other council want to, any of, now I'm going to, already have a first, and we have a second, and the roll call, please?
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye. Thank you so much. Okay, motion approved five zero. And do we have any AB1234 reports now? Okay, do we have any, Mayor, okay, Madam, may I go ahead? Councilman Castellano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask city staff to look for a venue, to have an emergency preparedness workshop in collaboration with Congresswoman Grace Napolitano's office. I think it'd be a great thing for us to do, talk about what to do in case of natural disasters, earthquakes, or anything that might go wrong. And let us know. Thank you.
Very good. Any other council member? Okay, Jessica?
I had briefly discussed this with the city manager, but I would like to have discussion amongst the council. Since we've been forced to move to council districts, and we're hearing more and more, you represent me, you're my district, I would like to, especially as we start to get into the budget season and things like that, consider holding council meetings at, in each of the districts. So five of our meetings go into each of the council districts, you know. For District Three, we can go to the Cameron Community Center. District Four and Five, we can use the senior senator at Cortez.
We did it more.
Yeah. And, and so, but really promote it within the district, as the council is here to hear from your district and your interests. And so that was just something I wanted to follow up with and see where we got.
So this is Madam AI, right? Okay, so Madam AI, and then we can bring back to discuss. Okay, we did it before. Okay, I think three years ago, we go to the Shadow Park, and I think we went to the high school, okay, the, the senior center, and then we went to the, the gym of the high school. We tried, and the, the, the difficulty is, okay, how to get, okay, the online to record it for, okay, this is some difficulty we, we faced last time. So, so, and then, speaking true, not that many people show up. Okay, so this is one issue.
And I understand that. And, I mean, but as opposed to three years ago, now we're actually in districts, and we have much more active resident groups.
And anyway, this is Madam AI. We go to, any other city council have any Madam AI, any, what do you want to comment, anything you want to say? Other than that, motion to the gym?
Make a motion.
There.